Okay, you've got to get used to the routines. I didn't get it the whole year. I never hit the switch.
We also call the meeting to order of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, July 28, 2014. Madam Clerk, would you lead us in the -- pleasure to lead us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please remain standing? Governor Deval L. Patrick has ordered the United States' flags and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' flag to be raised at half-staff on Monday, 28th, in honor of Sergeant Major Kevin Walsh, United States National Guard of Norwood, who died July 17th of this year. Thank you. Arriving late, please mark this down.
It's a hurricane out there or something.
Vice Chair, Mr. Cott. Nice to see you.
Very good. Sorry about that, folks.
Mr. Bergman, mail.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items in the mail packet. One is a draft timetable for Fall Special Town Meeting that we've circulated now among staff and with the town moderator. There is -- we've typically been meeting the first or second week in November for Fall Special Town Meeting to complete action on the budget so that we can then set the tax rate at a tax rate recap hearing held prior to Thanksgiving. This year, the first week of November is an election. It's the state election, that first Tuesday. So that bumps us to the second week where Monday is the 10th, Tuesday is the 11th, the holiday, Veterans' Day. And so what the staff consensus was to recommend that we meet on the Wednesday, the 12th of November. No actions needed tonight, but just for information's sake to start circulating the draft timetable a little bit more. Typically, the board would need to vote next month. August 18th is the date that's proposed in the schedule. And then to have the warrant open for about a month, it would need to close on September 26th in order to have 45 days prior to that proposed town meeting date. We have not assembled all that many topics for the Fall Special Town Meeting warrant. We've talked about a couple of them here: road acceptances for New Estate Road and Agog Hill, and amendments to the revolving fund for dog enforcement bylaw to pay for our intermunicipal agreement with Boxborough. General bylaw amendment for Finance Committee residency. You may want to do that also to apply to other town boards as well. We'll have some budget adjustments, and we'll be working on other proposed articles for your consideration next month. But where we hadn't circulated or begun to get the date out yet, I wanted to give you a heads-up on what we were looking at. So it's about the same time that we usually hold it. And that would allow the tax recap hearing to take place on Monday, the 17th. We haven't plugged it in yet, but if we were going to have one of those Saturday budget, all-day budget meetings, we could fit that into the schedule as well. So.
Thanks for making November a very busy month.
It'll be a busy month, yeah. And then busy, you know, we work hard and we play hard, so.
That's true.
So the other item that I put in the packet is a work plan that was adopted last week for the MAGIC subregion of NA PC. And I had sent you an electronic copy of this and the larger work plan that the parent organization, NA PC, has adopted for the year. But I just wanted to highlight briefly, or mention really, that there are a number of projects that MAGIC is taking on for this year, which are of interest to Littleton, including a transportation project where there's going to be some NA PC staff assistance available to help work through and help implement Cross-Town Connect, which is one of this board's priorities. Going to continue to work in the MAGIC subregion, implementing complete streets policies similar to the one that Littleton adopted. There's funding, we hope, under the Healthy Communities provision of the state transportation bond bill that was passed. There are some regional housing initiatives that we've been involved with that are becoming a model for other communities. We're going to work on that. And plus, there'll be some staff support from NA PC for the MAGIC communities working on economic development as well. So it's a lot of projects that are of interest to Littleton, and it's time well spent. I just wanted to share that.
Keith, I read the attachment you sent, and there was a big focus on communication and specifically using technology in inter-town communication as well as communication with their townspeople. Particularly, there's a lot of good ideas, I thought, in that section, so.
Yeah, and there's a lot of capability or capacity that NA PC is building into its own staff to be able to work with communities on better communicating with their folks. So hopefully, we can take advantage of some of that.
That'd be great.
Moving on, public input. Anybody? Seeing none, board input.
None for me.
Mr. Cott?
Changing it up there, Mr. Chairman.
Hmm?
Wow.
Did it throw you off?
Yeah, kind of scared me.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. McCready?
I wasn't sure who you were going to here. I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Ball?
Just like to note, on the 20th of July, the Rotary Club of Littleton sponsored the Appleman, and the Appleman Triathlon is a big fundraiser for Rotary here in town. But importantly, the reason I bring it up in tonight's forum is that it was a time-wide event, and we had people from all over the town coming and volunteering for that. It wouldn't have happened without all the people of Littleton coming together, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Just two quick things and 300th celebration things that are coming up before our next meeting. On this Saturday, the 2nd, the Trivia Road Rally Contest starts behind this town hall at 10 o'clock in the morning. For those who want to participate, you'll be given clues to find different areas, and you'll find trivia about the town of Littleton, so it should be a good outing. That night, the Contra Dance will be at the Oak Meadow Montessori School. That'll be at 7:00 PM. That event, free event, is sponsored by the Lyceum. And wear soft shoe, soft sole shoes. And that's it. So moving on, number three, we have town appointments to be made for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Clean Lakes Committee, and then having to do with the planning for a new library. All those appointments will be made tonight. So probably start right away with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
May I ask you a question before we actually start doing the specific committees?
Sure.
You see, on the Bicycle Committee, we talk about an indefinite term, the appointment. Do we have rationale for why we have indefinite versus fixed terms?
Yeah, none of the -- for any of the boards that are established by vote of the Board of Selectmen, they don't have terms with them. And it's, I mean, that's the list of about 20 or 30. We could, I mean, we could certainly move to, you know, a practice of having finite terms. What has, but the practice has been to not have, to establish the committees for, you know, for particular purposes, not to make them permanent committees, although frankly, some of them don't, you know, stay and don't go away. But it's been the practice that for those committees that this board appoints, they don't have terms. For the committees that are established by vote of town meeting or bylaw statute, that those have terms. You could certainly revisit that practice.
Yeah, and it's not something I want to hold tonight up about the issue, but if maybe sometime down the road, we could look at, because I've mentioned previously about ad hoc committees, you know, where they go on forever, is perhaps give them a term limit also, and then specific terms for the people serving on the committees also have term, well, not term limits to the people, but each appointment is a term, just like we seem to have most of the others. But appreciate that explanation.
Yeah, and I think in the organization objective that we can be looking at, we can look at that, and it may be well to, you know, after some point, you could say that a committee of indefinite term will not last more than, you know, X years or something. And then it's the committee itself that either goes away by the board's vote, or it moves to become permanent, which would shift it, say, to a bylaw or something, for example.
PJ, previously, we've had some of these committees come up, and they, you know, they tell us that, you know, we don't, you know, we'll go for an indefinite time. We don't want to come back and get reappointed. So there's been a couple that have come and suggested that to us, and kind of adopted that, too.
Some of the committees have, I'll make sure I step forward, Kirby.
Kirby, you'll have to monit you.
Some of the committees have a direct thing that they're working towards, like a report. Others, and I'll take the voter participation committee, we sort of thought we had that, and then we got going and realized we had years and years and years of work ahead of us. And so, you know, I think we have to take that into account when we consider a term, whether, what is the end product? Do we want a report? Do we want an ongoing?
Yeah, and it wasn't my intention tonight to try and lead down a discussion on it, just to clarify as to why we have those, and you did that for me, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good point. Well-taken. We'll start with the Bicycle Committee. We have two vacancies. We have two applications. It's Scott McGregor and Dulcie LaCroux, if that's pronounced right. Any one of those people in the audience?
Scott's here.
Scott McGregor.
Hi, Scott. How you doing?
Good.
Would you like to say anything?
Uh, I don't really have anything to say.
No, that's, we just give anyone who comes before the board that wants an appointment a chance to speak if they want. You don't have to.
All right.
Thank you. Board, any?
I just want to know if you rode your bicycle here.
I didn't. Uh, no.
Thank you.
Not in the red today.
Good choice tonight.
Yeah.
I do own one, though.
Wise move.
These are great applications, both. Some make great fits. I liked how that it's a husband and wife applying for the Bicycle Committee and the CLC. I was hoping they might be here. They had a really interesting story.
The one that's typed out?
Yeah, exactly.
Any other comments? If not, then we probably don't look for motion.
Good. Okay, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Scott McGregor and Dulcie LaCroux to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for an indefinite term.
Second. It's the move in second. All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
Sustainability Committee.
Congratulations.
We have one vacancy, one application of Gary LaCroux. Is Gary here? Nope. Any comments by the board?
That's the husband I was mentioning. Looks great.
If not, then I would look for a motion.
Which one is this? CLC, right? Okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint the following nominees to the Clean Lakes Committee for a term.
No, you want to appoint, yeah, you want to appoint Gary.
Sustainability, I'm sorry. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Gary LaCroux to the Sustainability Committee for an indefinite term.
Second. It's moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Moving on to Clean Lakes Committee. Now, how many vacancies do we actually have?
Yeah, I was a little confused with this.
Yeah, that was confusing.
2014, 2014, and we have four applications.
Two are March's alternates.
But I think one name comes up twice. Scott Lewis comes up twice, listed above. He comes up as Lake Manawanke, and then the citizen-at-large. So would that make the fourth?
Let's see what this letter said.
Oh, no, that's probably just a, an error.
There was an email trail on this.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the four nominations that we received are the ones that are summarized in the bottom of this page, and that are contained in the proposed motion that we have nominations for the alternate for Spec Pond, member for Long Lake, and a member and alternate for Lake Manawanke.
There was an email or something in there where it got a little into the weeds, so to speak. And I wasn't sure whether what they wanted was two alternates or one alternate.
Right.
It was had to follow the thread, Ben.
Because, you know, so everybody knows, it doesn't have one of these packages in front of them. Each of the participants in this effort sent us a memo, I guess it's a memo in all cases, saying who they would like to have be their representative.
Yeah, each neighborhood association is to submit their list of nominees. So somewhere on this, I got the impression that we had two alternates in the documentation, but only one alternate shown on our sheet.
Right. Looks like Lake Manawanke needs an alternate. They supplied an alternate and a member. Unless, are you saying that maybe there should be two underneath Lake Manawanke? Because Scott's, no.
Scott used to be the citizen-at-large, and then he became the alternate.
Oh, okay. Well, Long Lake's is very clear, John Folsom. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, maybe on Lake Manawanke, we table that, and when they have representatives here to explain first what they really want to try to accomplish, rather than speculating endlessly.
Wait, do we, how many vac, not vacancies, we have three that are up.
There's two vying for Manawanke and only one vacancy. A reappointment at this point. Scott Lewis is the alternate.
But we have a recommendation from that committee, right?
Mm-hmm.
Does the bylaw, is the bylaw permissive to alternate?
Yes.
So that's.
Yeah, member and alternate, a member, one member and one alternate from each association.
Has anybody talked to Scott Edwards about his participation on this? Any chance? I know.
Of whether he's going to be participating on this committee, I don't know.
Something we should probably let the Light Water Commissioners know.
Well, I guess I would suggest we go ahead and vote this, but we really ought to have an answer if we have to make. We would have the ability to add somebody as an alternate. Is that correct, Keith, according to the bylaw?
That citizen-at-large is up in 2015. I think all they, they were assuming was a replacement for.
Scott Lewis?
Scott Lewis as a citizen-at-large, you know, where Scott's being appointed as the alternate. He's just being reappointed. They recommend him as a reappointment, and then.
So that would make the fourth.
Correct.
So I think we're all set.
His email says he's up as the alternate, and the application shows member, with Jim Barisano as the alternate.
Right, right. Well, it says, "It appears that Lake Manawanke Neighborhood Association wishes to recognize by nominating Scott Lewis as a regular member and Jim Barisano as a new alternate, to be the new alternate."
Right. I would think Barisano would have to be a citizen-at-large, because you're right.
Yes. That's what I'd say, too.
Then you read Scott Lewis's email.
And round and round we go.
This is supposed to be the easy stuff, guys.
Well, Scott Lewis is the Lake Manawanke member. That's what is being proposed to us.
Right.
So who on Lake, so 2014.
Signal a sentence, Scott.
So actually, what we have here is we have him in two positions, and we don't need to have that. He's either a Lake Manawanke member or a citizen-at-large. He doesn't need to be both.
Right, no. Well, his email, what you were saying, PJ, is that he's a VP, and he's asking, as VP can, as VP can act as his alternate, so Chuck is the president of the Manawanke Association. So he's asking the question, if Chuck isn't there as the alternate, he can act as the full member as VP, unless he wishes to nominate somebody else.
Wasn't that why we have alternates, to act in the stead of the primary?
I would assume, yes, this is true. So, I mean, it looks like Mr. Lewis still wants to be the alternate, and to appoint Jim Barisano as the citizen-at-large, there's a vacancy that expires. He'd have to reapply in 2015. So we have the complete board filled. Just reappoint Scott and Mr. Barisano as the alternate citizen-at-large. He's good for one year, and he has to come back before us. Okay?
Oops.
Anyone make that motion?
I will make that motion. All right, so that's just Manawanke. Long Lake is pretty straightforward, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And Spec Pond is straightforward, right?
Yes.
All right, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint the following nominees to Clean Lakes Committee to the terms expiring June 30, 2017, with the exception of Mr. Jim Barisano, whose term will expire in 2015 as the alternate citizen-at-large for Manawanke.
No, just citizen-at-large.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, just citizen-at-large. Spectacled pond alternate David Richard, Long Lake member John Folsom, Lake Manawanke member Scott Lewis, and citizen-at-large Jim Barisano, term expiring June 30, 2015.
Before, there's a second. Is any one of those people here tonight? I didn't even open it up. I guess not. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second.
I do have a comment on this. I mean, put the form right in front of me, and it says Jim Barisano, alternate, not citizen-at-large.
Well, if you look at the breakdown, PJ, that's just a misprint. That's all.
Is that a misprint?
I would.
Presume it would have to be.
I would presume that it would have to be, yeah.
Okay. Okay, it's moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the library.
Library trustees are looking to have the allowed representation on the PMBC for the duration of their planning and design project, and they are, the trustees voted to request that you appoint Mark Rambacher and David Sill and the library's interim director as non-voting ex officio members of PMDC for the bylaw.
Yeah, let's see. You haven't pointed out right there.
Yeah, yeah. The, you had appointed ex officio members of, from the Historical Commission for their project with the long store. That was the first time that we invoked that provision. The library director, Kip Roberson, is heading to the West Coast. He's leaving for.
Seattle.
Yeah, Seattle, Oregon, Washington, one of those. And so the library trustees will be here with a request for staffing vacancy review at our next meeting, but want to have their interim director also on the, working on the project.
Is there already an interim director? Somebody step in?
We haven't been notified by the trustees who they've selected.
Okay.
Would it be necessary to amend the motion interim director until permanent director appointed, or just when the permanent director just pulls in?
Yeah, I'd say when the permanent director comes in, when, yeah, that we could just make that appointment at that time, yeah.
Moving for motion?
Want me to do that? Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Town Code, Section 13-6, Subparagraph C, to designate library trustees Mark Rambacher and David Sill and the library's interim director as non-voting ex officio members of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for the duration of the library's planning and design project.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Carrie's. In oh four, asking the treasurer to speak. What we have before us is a water bond issue for improvements of $4,486,000 at 2.61%. And before I turn it over to him, I explained to people on page five of our sheets. And before I turn it over to him, I explained to people on page five of our, of our sheets, it breaks it down on what this money is being used for us. $3,720,000 for well number two redevelopment, authorized in 2012. $178,000 for Cobb's well, authorized in 2007. $174,200 for water, I guess clarity. And approved or authorized 2009. $118,300 for water for well number two. And last, well improvements, $194,700,000 approved or authorized in 2012. Mr. Treasurer, you want to take it from here?
It was a very competitive bid. We had six bidders for this issue, which was very good for us. Twenty basis points divided the top bid from the last bid, so it was, like I said, very competitive. But they're all very different. This was 2.6 and change as an effective yield. TIC is an effective yield, it's called the true interest cost, but it's basically an effective yield. If you look at the bonds themselves, which you will be signing individually, there's thirteen different bonds. The coupon on those bonds is 3%, except the last one, which is 3.25%. So the, the people who bought this purchase from, purchased the bonds from us were willing to pay us a premium to get those larger coupons. And by giving us cash, along with the $4 million that they're giving us, brings the interest cost down. So it's $168,000 in premium that's being added to this issue. It goes to the water department's free cash, because it's inside the levy and that's where it gets added.
That's right where they need it.
That's exactly where they need it. They'll pay the issuance cost out of that. The issuance cost for this was about $45,000. Legal expenses, underwriting expenses and so on. So they'll wind up with around $120,000 to go to the bottom line for their reserves.
It's going to be first?
It's, it's a large amount, because the need for a 3% coupon, some of the bids we got actually had 4% coupons, a little bit higher than 4%. To get those coupons, you get higher premiums. So one bid actually came in with something like a $268,000 premium attached to it. Netted out, it didn't hit this 2.6%, but you can see it was pretty varied with these people who bid for our, for our issue would bid for us. So it was good, it was very good. We'll have another one in two weeks, to the next meeting. The Church Meadows BAN. We had it separated from this bond, just for legal issues. But it'll be a separate BAN, it'll be a statehouse note, so it's not going to be as competitive as some of the other BANs that we got before. So we're not going actually out to a formal bid with legal opinions at all. So it'll be probably around 50 or 60 basis points of one-year issue. That's kind of where I'm headed with that right now, what we're looking at.
But this true interest cost of about 2.6 that we paid this time is favorable to what we would have paid if we were a double A community or what we paid four years ago when, when we were a double A, by almost a full percentage point.
And even on current interest rates, I think you saw the email that went around, current interest rates is around 3.7% for a double A issue at this same point in time. Being triple A, we were able to get it for about, you know, 100 basis points less or a full basis, a full percentage point. So around $500,000 in decreased debt service over the life of the issue. So again, for the water rate payers, that's a tremendous benefit.
Your, your bond council was involved in all this, too? You're all set with that?
Yep, there's a legal opinion attached. You're excited?
As he smiles.
I already signed it.
And it did come with an official, because every time we go out for a bond issue, we have to, we get a rating from the bond rating agency. So even though we had just had our, our, our bond rating upgraded in, in February and March and a report issued that, there is now a fresh report that Standard and Poor's has issued this month affirming the triple A rating. Always good to see you in writing.
Ready there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to adopt the form of the vote prescribed by bond council, a copy of which is attached here too and made part thereof, or hereof, relative to the sale of $4,486,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan for 2014 bonds of the town dated August 1st, 2014 to Roosevelt and Cross, Inc., with true interest cost, TIC, of 2.62186% and a premium of $168,647.35.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Dean.
Moving on, we have a public hearing. Are we on time yet?
Yep.
Yes, we are.
Exactly on time.
On time.
Public hearing JL Realty Holdings LLC. I'll read the legal notice. Littleton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, July 28, 2014, at 7:30 PM in Littleton Town Office's room 107, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, to act on the request of Jeffrey Armento.
Armento.
Armento, thank you very much. Doing business as JL Realty Holding LLC for Class II license to buy, sell, exchange or assemble new and used motor vehicles or parts thereof at 170 Air Road, Littleton, Mass., 01460. Comments thereof may be submitted in writing to the Selectman Town Administrator's Office at 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. by noon on Friday, July 25, 2014, or in person at the hearing. Littleton Board of Selectmen, Joseph Knox, chairman. Mr. Town Administrator, do we have anything that was sent in writing?
We did not get any comments in writing.
Jeffrey, if you want to come up and explain to the board exactly what it is, I hope it's kind of simple anyway, but-
Yeah, it's kind of simple. So we have an existing, we own the building at 170 Air Road, we purchased that in December and we have an existing car wash distribution business there. We sell, install and service car washes all over New England and eastern New York. And most of us are gearheads and we just thought it would be kind of interesting to get involved in buying and selling a couple of classic cars, although it's just a hobby business out of the facility. Our plan is to go to local auctions and maybe buy one or two cars and have them at the facility. There are spots that are along 2A that we would probably put them there during the day. You know, we wouldn't be changing anything on the actual lot, but most of what we would do would be sales over the internet. Again, it would be mainly a side business. This wouldn't be to, to drive revenue or anything like that. It's more fun, hobby style type business, which I think I put in the write-up, which I did. That's pretty much it. We're not planning on servicing any vehicles there or anything like that. We can't do that anyways, but that's not our plan. Our plan is to purchase vehicles that, you know, maybe need to be cleaned up, painted, buffed, detailed, that kind of stuff. And we have customers who do that of ours. So it would be perfect for us to buy a vehicle that needs a little bit of refurbishment, if you will, have somebody else do it and then I'll sell it, hopefully for at least what we paid for.
And you've been before the planning board with a 5-0 vote in favor of what you're doing?
Yeah, yeah, we've been to planning board and to the Board of Appeals as well.
170 Air Road, is that right near DSI Marketing?
That sounds familiar. Cherrystone Furniture?
Yeah, DSI's right next to it.
Right next door, yeah. So when you turn into that complex, you turn left for them.
Yeah.
Our building's on the right. So right when you turn in, we're on 2A, you look at the garage door, basically, into our facility.
Any questions?
As I go through the documentation, display and for sale used a little bit interchangeably. The planning board's letter does say three vehicles for sale. You mentioned internet sales also. I think probably going down the presumption here is that there'll be the maximum of three vehicles outside. How many you really end up for sale at any one given time? Maybe something different if we're doing internet sales?
Candidly, I don't foresee us having more than three vehicles for sale at any given time.
I think just for our, you know, that's the inner argument, I would believe. We're okay with that, at least personally I am. Just when we see three, three only, and now someone goes on the internet and finds four vehicles for sale from your company, you know, could come back, say you only authorized three.
Yeah.
So I think as we take this vote, we should acknowledge that internet sales are very different than physical. And if it's three vehicles on the outside lot, and that's what we understand it to be, and vote accordingly. I'm certainly okay that way.
Well, with respect to that comment, I think the restriction, actually, I take that back. You know, that's true. I mean, you could, the planning board's been very specific about what, what you can have, how many you can have. And our motion is not quite as specific. So I guess I got to ask the same question. You're going to, do you want the delineation between physical onsite and total number of cars you would sell? In other words, might you have a couple in the works that are not onsite and three onsite?
You know, I highly doubt it, but I guess it could happen. I mean, you just never know at any one given time. There aren't even really three spots to put vehicles there that you could even put them outside. So if we had three vehicles, maybe one or two would be outside, only during the week while we're there, because this isn't going to even be a weekend thing.
And when you're just- Most of the businesses are going inside?
Yeah, yeah, we have about an 8,000 square foot warehouse that's pretty empty. Some vehicles would always be inside. So, I mean, I guess if you ask me my choice, I would say no more than two or three outside and I can have five or six in total, but I don't think we'd ever actually do that anymore.
You've never done anything like this before?
No. I'm a pro and a pro, yeah. Yeah, in the, I've been a car guy my whole life, and we've got the car wash business, but I've always wanted to kind of just dabble in classic cars and-
You know, we don't intend, you know, delivering this, is that it's not a used car lot.
Yeah, and I don't want it to be that anyways.
If we're all going down the same road, you know, no pun intended on that, and it's three outside, period, dot.
I don't, I don't think my intent is to limit whatever he's transacting online.
Agreed with you.
It's just what storage. I got one more question. Have you checked with the fire prevention officer about the inside storage of the cars?
No, I haven't done that. I actually, when we moved into the building, we actually moved in in March and Alan, I'm not sure his last name, I think from the fire department, came by or emailed me to see us. And we've emailed back and forth and he still hasn't come out to see the facility, even for our existing car wash distribution business. So, no, I have not talked to him about, about the storage of vehicles inside at all. I can do that, but I have not done.
Would you have a problem if we made that continue?
No, no.
I have any problem at all?
Anything else, Miss Boyd? Thought I would seek a motion.
Open to public, see?
Yeah. Any public input on this? It's open to the public, public hearing? Seeing none.
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
It's moved in second to close the hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now on for motion.
So can we add to the motion, the bit about upon approval of the fire department?
Sure. I've added.
Want to make that motion?
I will, if you'd like me to. Are we going to do anything with regards to what you wanted to do?
No, I don't think we'd need to adjust this. It's just as we're voting on it, we realize, you know, what the virtual world is like and the acknowledgement. And the letter is specific from the planning board, so that is binding on as far as three vehicles for sale outside. I'm plenty comfortable with it that way, and you just adding the fire department.
That's routine stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, subsection 58-59 to approve the application of Jeffrey, and now I'm going to trip over it.
Armento.
Armento.
There you go.
DBA is JL Realty Holdings LLC for a Class II license to buy, sell, exchange or assemble secondhand motor vehicles or parts thereof at 170 Air Road, pending approval of the Littleton Fire Department.
Second? Move in second, any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? They're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
I'll have to come down and check them out, though, too.
No, I'm not getting rid of my thing. I'm a 67 vet.
You'd do well with that.
Okay, 5B has to do with the 300th Parade Committee and a vendor. If possible, John, I'd like you to, would you like to give the history of this and how we did seek two different vendors? And John being the chairman of the 300th Parade Committee.
Yes. First of all, SS is the first one that came for us, but, and he wanted to be the sole vendor for the parade day to give, to sell the miscellaneous stuff that they sell. No balloons, no food, no nothing like that. Then, then we figured that we might as well get another vendor involved, to just to see, to compare. SS has given us a certain amount of money. We wanted to make sure it was the right amount of money to do. And we, we asked another vendor from, from the same town, each province were down. So, and he came over and the other, than SS. You want me to message him out?
No, it's not. The thing is, we follow state guidelines, taking-
Right.
Bonnie, can you help me out?
It's the only two that, that, that we got back on.
It's under the requirements for, for competitive bidding or anything like that. Some business practice prevailed and actually went over and above soliciting other quotes.
And it should be noted, too, that if we didn't have this kind of agreement, then there'd be no stopping 15 different vendors from, from participating. And we have the police department who has said that they will find out the certain colors that they're wearing. There's only going to be six, I think, push carts at the, at the, at the parade that we identified, and they'll be our sole vendor. Now, is, is Dwayne here? A representative from SNS? Questions from the board?
The only thing is, when we do the motion, put the right date in there.
Oh, yeah, six, yeah.
Instead of seven.
Great date, yes, please.
Well, vendors are the seventh.
Won't get any money.
Free-for-all on the sixth after all.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the application of SNS Novelty of Providence, Rhode Island for street vendor license for Saturday, September 6, 2014, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM along the 300th Celebration Parade Route for selling children's toys, balloons, hats, horns, stuffed animals, et cetera.
Second.
It's moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nice job.
We're moving along at breakneck speed tonight, Mr. Chairman. We're right on schedule.
All right, it's like you never talk about it, no matter what the pitches, so be careful.
Turf fields, right on time, 7:45, we have Mr. Curry here.
Evening, Michael.
Mr. Curry, we have read what little information that we had. We didn't have that much supplied to us, so-
Right, I was just running a little behind on all that. I just wasn't able to finish everything.
I think we all have an interest in this.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. To, does Bonnie have a- Yeah, okay.
All right, sorry. So I'm here on behalf of Littleton Turf Group, which is, and that's the only reason why I'm here. I'm not here. I do sit on the parking rec board of commissioners. I'm not here on behalf of them or-
With the Littleton Police Department.
Or the Littleton Police Department, right. Someone is covering my shift for me at the time, so I'm able to present this. So we got that taken care of.
This is the time that we gave to Michael, so this is-
Also, I'm not here on behalf of Littleton Lacrosse, where I am also the president of that, the youth organization. But this turf group is a large group. The athletic director from the high school, Littleton youth football, Littleton flag football, youth soccer, youth lacrosse and baseball are all part of this turf organization. Currently, there is approximately 210 high school athletes which participate in football, soccer, field hockey and lacrosse. As far as the youth sports go, those numbers are a lot higher, but every sport has got a lot- but every sport has got a lot of overlap due to the different seasons. The proposal from the turf group is the potential for three fields. First field would be new synthetic turf field at the Alumni Grass Football Stadium at Russell Street, at the Russell Street Middle School. The second would be one turf field where the existing... Oh, here we go. So this is the high school. This is the closest field to New Estate Road, right here. That would be turfed. This is alumni. We'd like to turf that. What this is, is the modified field that sits right next to, right next to the middle school, which would be a smaller scale school, I mean, field right here. These two would be full regulation fields for youth, high school, any club, team that would like to, you know, rent those facilities. We've talked to Savas Donis. He was involved in turf discussions with us, and we talked about getting lights up there at that high school field. We feel that with the construction of these fields, this would alleviate pressure of existing grass fields, which are just overrun and overused. Due to the overuse, these fields don't have time to regenerate. You know, we get off this field, this middle school field, late June. We're right back on it next week with football. Never really has time to regenerate. Same with the high school field. The boys' lacrosse is up there right now. They get off late June, and, you know, soccer will be practicing up there next month. Alumni field's got cannons going on it now, water cannons. You know, we do the best we can. We moved the girls', all-girls' lacrosse down there due to just the low impact. Boys' lacrosse just destroyed this field, so we had to actually resurface, re-sod an entire section of the, that field. This also, doing these fields, would take pressure off the town in finding new athletic space for Littleton. I know Morgan property has been discussed, but we feel that, you know, by the time that gets going, the amount of money it costs just to even get into the Morgan property, the cost of that alone, just, it's not a good idea for, you know, as far as going turf. Right now, I talked to the Park and Rec, to Kate, and she says they approximately play, pay $30,000 a year, which covers... And this comes from youth sports. I've taken out baseball. The only sports for the youth sports that cover this are football, flag football, soccer, and lacrosse. I took out the sports that don't pay into this. Fertilizer, paint, irrigation, seed loan, and that's approximately $30,000. Over a 10-year investment, that's $300,000. That would save the Park and Rec. With these fields, they have a 10- to 12-year life, and that's all dependent upon how much we get on them, how much we want to rent them out, play on them year-round, not year-round. And that's all just dependent upon how we want to kind of police this or those fields. This would also save the town approximately 1 to 3 million gallons of water per year. The amount of water that's just kicked out on irrigation is crazy. I just did this off of numbers calculated through what kids supplied. Almost 8,000 pounds of pesticide. We could increase our playing time on these fields from 32 weeks on grass fields, 25 hours a week. That's about 8,000 hours a year we get out of grass fields. With turf fields, we could probably get about 44 weeks, 68 hours. That's 29,000 hours on these fields. I've been in contact with Acton about the facility they built. Cost them $3 million for two side-by-sides, safety netting, fencing, walkways, concession stand, small grass field, and a whole very large parking lot. And that's, that was their project at $3 million. They also told me that they're sitting on a five-year contract, which collects $142,000 a year from one of the clubs, one of the soccer clubs, and $54,000 from their friends of the lower field. It's a committee that they put together to do these fields. That's what I think we would need to do, obviously in a smaller scale, is try and contact one of these clubs, the soccer clubs, to, you know, come in for the summer and run clinics, run clubs. And with, you know, the three fields real close, I think it'd be, you know, attractive to anybody with the lights already at alumni and potentially at the high school. We do have many lights going right now for that modified field, but I don't think that would be anything, you know, wouldn't attract night games there or anything like that. If you look on the second page, down at the bottom, this is for alumni maintenance alone for the spring's women's lacrosse, flag football, soccer. This is on alumni. You're saving $8,500 alone just from the highway department on alumni. If you were able to do the middle school, it's around $3,500 in savings there. And so Jim gave me, or Dan actually gave me, the entire high school complex, so that, that wouldn't be for everything. So you could probably just assume it'd be the same amount for, as it was for alumni. So it'd be about $16,000 between those two fields you could save every year, right there. Currently, Acton's renting their fields out when it's not used by the club program. They do big rates, as I showed on the final page there, and then they just have summer hours, winter hours, fall hours. You know, at this point, I've gone in front of the finance committee. Now I'm here to speak with you to see what direction you'd like us to go, I guess, if any.
Thanks for coming. I think there's a lot of people who have, you know, shared interests. A lot of people who have kids or grandkids that have played sports acknowledge the problems of booking the fields and everything else. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I have a lot of interest in what, what you're talking about. I see a lot of benefits of it. And I'll just start off, and I'll turn to the board. My question would be, you said in like 12 years you have to resurface?
Yep. Yes, sir. All dependent upon the amount of usage you get. You have to, just the top turf is to... They try and get that resurfaced between 10 and 12 years. It's a $10,000 cost.
Which kind of field is it going to be?
Synthetic turf. It's the rubberized turf.
Is it the loose, the loose type?
With the sand in between?
Yeah, that moves around?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Open up the wood frame.
Just, just a couple of things. I think you painted a really, really good argument for this. There's a lot of benefits, like you said, to the environmental impact and the cost savings alone is, is great. Never mind just the fact that we need them. So that's awesome. Thank you. And also a great representative, because as long as I've known you and your family, you've always been heavily involved in Littleton sports since day one. So I couldn't think of anybody better to have here speaking to us. Is there any other kind of regular maintenance that you have to do, like weekly, or is it just...
Nope. I believe it would be twice a year for a brush. I'm sorry. I have to turn the mic on that one.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, the, the town probably by a groomer that grooms the rubber and sand granules back in the middle of the field. They have a tendency, like migrate out to the sides. And then once or twice a year, they try to sanitize the fields. That would probably have to be contracted. I'm not exactly sure, but they do, they do need to be sanitized.
Just for the record, it's Mike Lynn, the athletic director.
And just so we're clear on that, the, obviously, the plan would be to generate some money. We'd probably have to most likely contract the brushing out maybe the first year. I believe the brush is around $35,000 if we wanted to brush it. Goes onto a three-point hedge, which the town owns. This comes lined for every sport you want to play on it. You tell them what you want to put on this field, and they line it, and we don't touch it again. All we got to do is brush it once to twice a year. All depends upon the amount of usage we get.
I guess my next question would be then, to use it for multiple sports, how do you differentiate which...
Different colors. So football would be in white, soccer would be in blue. And then they, I don't know how they do, like just, they just change the colors of the flying. It's pretty neat to look at. They've done it, multiple fields.
Question about the financing of this. You're, you're gonna do...
That's the big question.
You're gonna do some, there's gonna be some cost savings. There's gonna be some environmental features about this, you know, with the reuse of water and stuff. And I guess this goes more to Bonnie. Given a 12-year lifespan, can, do we have the ability here to collect enough fees to pay the bond, which I guess is going to be about 3 million, something like that?
1.8.
1.8 million, so that when we do this, we can do this at the most cost-effective manner possible.
I've asked our counterparts in Acton to give me some of the revenue information, so I'm waiting for that to come in to see, you know, what, what I can call out of the budget for savings and what we could get for potential new revenue sources. So we're just kind of in early phases of gathering that data. I can tell you that for, you know, a track, you can borrow for a 15-year term maximum, which would, you know, be pushing it to the outer limits of the lifespan for something like this, based on what, what Mr. Corey's telling us. Typically, for a project like this, you know, we would, as we have in the past, authorize them as debt exclusions. We can always continue to try and keep them inside the levy as we did with the track project. But that's kind of just some of the past.
But you think it's feasible that it'll mostly pay for itself?
I think it's too, too early based on what I have right now. I haven't received the revenue information from Acton. So the information that I received tonight is, is very helpful, but I need to get, I need to get the rest of the data so I can do the analysis on it.
When we're looking at trying to move with this?
Probably right away.
Yeah. So we were hoping to get going on this spring. As soon as youth sports get off in the spring, there's someone turn these, at least these two apart and get ready to go for fall sports.
Is there also a supporting fundraising organization, such as there was with the track?
We haven't put one together yet for this. No, we haven't put one together for that yet.
All right, I got a couple. Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Get on the funding sources, too. As Mr. McCurdy said, you know, I'd like to see the, you know, prior to making any really formal decision, this Littleton Turf Group formalize itself, recognize itself with the town, and possibly carry forward some type of fundraising events and things of that nature to offset the cost. I'd also suggest possibly going to the school committee, kind of give them a heads up. I am, go ahead.
We already have.
Okay, good.
Fine.
You hadn't mentioned that, so...
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, and if they're on board, it's all good. I know in the past, we've talked about sponsorship for fields, corporate sponsorships. You know, towns are doing it. It's, it's, it's part of life at this point in, in the state, so I wouldn't be opposed to seeing you go out and see if you can get some funding from those types of sources and bring it before the school committee and see what the policies in town are to see if we can get some sponsorship for the field to be done. The, you mentioned early on the contracts that have, Acton has. I'd like you to see, you know, as you formalize this Littleton Turf Group, what's out there? Is there any interest to come to Littleton and sign a five-year, multi-year contract, whether it be for soccer, lacrosse, or any of the other sports that you, you had mentioned? And if so, what do those contracts look like as far as funding, as far as interest in the town? We're in a, we're in a great spot for people to get to, so I'm sure there'd be some interest out there. And then who's gonna, is, is it still gonna be the Park and Rec administering the usage? Who's using, when they're using, and all that type of stuff?
I think there's a plan in place already, so...
I think if this were to become a reality, it'd be an addendum to the existing memorandum of agreement.
Perfect.
It's DPW of schools and Parker Mecca working together on that. One other thing, too, just so people aren't confused about it. The lifespan of the facility is much more than 10 to 12 years. So if you think of like a car, when you purchase a vehicle, your tires maybe last 30,000 to 40,000 miles, which your car's gonna hopefully last 100 or whatever it is. The, the green synthetic turf that you actually see is like the tires. You would replace it, but everything that's underneath it and all the site work, that, that's the expensive part. The, the actual synthetic grass isn't the expensive part of the field. So, just so people are aware of that, 10 to 12 years, you'd have that expensive replacing the actual... They just come in utility knives and cut it up and then roll down a new one, but just so raised.
Just to know, and as far as the proposal or any type of formal presentation as you come forward, something like Mike just said would be interesting to see. So we can project out in that 10-year span or 12-year span, what are we looking for? Is the Littleton Turf Group gonna be responsible? If we can delineate those lines exactly who's gonna be responsible for doing the replacement through fees, through anything to do with these, these fields? I think it's a fantastic idea. It's a long overdue. We absolutely need something to, some turf fields in this town. The other point is to get, you know, as you, this, and I'm going back to your Littleton Turf Group, because I think it's a great idea, that's a grassroots, no pun intended, organization, to start this thing growing. But talk to Bonnie about getting a account set up so that, you know, any donations coming in, you have a place to go. And set up, you know, some, some mechanisms for all your finances. One other suggestion I'd have is to possibly go to the PMBC. You got a lot of talent on that group, and they'll be more than willing to help you out in any type of bidding documents and ideas and layouts and stuff like that. I think it's, be very beneficial for you to check them out, too. Again, I think it's a great idea, long overdue. I'm sure once we have some formalized proposals, Mike, I think the town... I know I would personally love to see that and move it forward as soon as possible. Will it be next spring? Well, we'll see. But depending on how hard this group really works, I think will dictate how fast we can get these things done. So it's a great idea.
Mr. Wolf?
Certainly, the math adds up when we talk about the usage of the fields. It's a great deal of awareness. School committee has an awareness of it, has not taken a position other than to see how it moves forward at this point, going with the other committees in town. You mentioned the PMBC. I'd say it's not a suggestion, but it should be a requisite. They've got the corporate knowledge of this, done the track, because you may remember we had options 1, 2, 3A, and 3B, and the three included turf field at alumni field. So we've got folks in town who have gone down that path, and they'll be a great use to us. And then certainly for all the mechanizations of bidding, you know, proposals, all that sort of stuff, they're the folks we use in town to do that, so they definitely need to be on the agenda. The LTO, Littleton Track Organization, I think provides a very good beginning as to how you may want to structure your turf organization. Maybe LTO, too, Littleton Turf Organization, I don't know what you want to call yourselves, but sincerely, those folks have been down, again, this path also on the fundraising piece and how to go about also building community support. And, you know, coming in front of the various boards is important, too, but at a town meeting, the town's gonna be voting. So you have to market this well to the town also. They have to be confident that this is gonna be taken care of, just like with the LTO and the various boards that are involved there did. So I'd suggest that you consider, and to run with Jim's grassroots bit, is that you have that grassroots buildup outside also, and not just the town boards. Because the town boards are limited numbers of votes when it comes to a town meeting. But definitely, I'd say, if we're in concurrence as a board, I think certainly we give direction that the PMBC must be involved, and the PMBC will actually come before us also at some point with the feasibility of this, as to putting an entire package together.
I just, I'm sorry.
No, Mr. McCurdy has to speak.
A couple of things to follow up while we're talking about creative financing. Are there fees currently being collected for the field that would, we're collecting fees from any group that goes on there now. I'd like to make sure that that's calculated into, you know, the offset of costs, and also the new field development. And you brought up an important point. We're spending a fair amount of energy on looking for new playing fields, and the cost of developing them, and will this then roll that back, so that we don't need to do that? Will this actually have the capacity to alleviate the need for new field development? And, and if that's so, and we've got that planned somewhere in the works, that rolls back some of the costs of the project, too.
Just to give you some ballpark numbers, based on the numbers that you've been million eight, the 15-year term and the rates that we're currently getting, it's about $170,000 for the first year's debt service payment. So that's kind of what you need to, you know, wrap your arms around as far as finding new revenue.
For 10-year period?
For 15.
15.
If we stuck to the 12 number, if we could. So that we're not paying, you know, it's like when you trade in a car, and you gotta, you gotta pay off the loan and then buy the new car. Let's have the car paid off before we buy it.
I think we'd also need to see what the, what the 12-year investment is. Is it, do you have to redo the whole field, or is it just the turf, and what the cost of that is, so?
And for information's sake, that the cost of the turf cannot, is not eligible for Community Preservation Act funding. You can do a field project, you can do a recreation project using CPA funds, but you can't use it to actually acquire the turf, so.
Just the turf, though, right?
Just the turf.
Is good.
Right, so it'd be important in the cost estimates to, to, if you want to even be able to go after CPA funding for part of the project, you need to separate out that portion, which is ineligible for CPA funding.
I just have two quick questions that will probably be worked out. If everything went smoothly, and this is gonna be done, do you think you're taking a chance doing both of the big fields in the same season? My, my question would be, if it got held up or something, what would you possibly do if both the alumni and the high school fields were still in construction?
On the school side of things, the other schools, Lunenburg's gonna be in that very situation, coming up to build a new school, as I understand, they're adding two more turf fields as part of that project, that's what Dr. Eadie told me. They're gonna have to play a lot of events away that maybe they would've had at home. They have rented fields in the neighboring, but they're left with almost no fields during their, their building project. Well, you hope the project went smoothly, and that you weren't in that situation, but you'd have to have a contingency plan. There's been schools that, that, I know Lincoln Sudert, when they were doing their building project, I think they went, I know they went at least a year, if not two years, no home football games, and, you know, that those types of things can't happen.
How long did we go without a track?
Yeah, I think we, was it four or five years that we did these?
At least. We survived that, so I'm sure you could work it out, Mr. Eadie.
The, the people that do this, they call them, they call them summer slammers. That's their, and they just, they get in there and they get them done, and they, you know, like Mike said, your last spring event, if it's timed up properly, they come in, they do the work, and they're hopefully out of there before your fall season starts. If you're Gillette Stadium, they do it in something like 10 days, or whatever they did there, they can do it.
Just one other comment, you know, you heard from the board about, you know, starting this process, getting this group together. I think, you know, your, your main base is already there, you know. Communicate to the kids that are already using the fields, and I think you'll have a great kick as far as getting the ball rolling, so.
It's rolling.
Yeah, so, I mean, just start, start getting it out there. Have parents start talking, have the kids start talking to their parents, and make it the talk of the town. Right after the 300th celebration is over, you can take over.
It's not a public hearing, but is there anyone in the public that would want to make a comment on this?
Angus Mulrowe?
Thank you.
Being a big advocate of Littleton youth baseball and softball, I know this past year, we had trouble getting our, our fields lined, because they were busy lining fields. You know, the Mike's talking about that they wouldn't have to do anymore, so on. From my perspective, I think it's a bonus, because I know the fields that we play baseball and softball on, will get the attention they need, so. One more bonus.
Hey, what else? Mr. Lynn?
On the school side of things, we don't feel this as much, but sometimes I attend the youth coordinators' meetings, and every spring, it seems like it's gotten more and more intense and stressful, and it's a good problem, because there's more and more, there's more kids, I don't know their exact numbers, but they're high. There's more kids playing sports in the youth level now than there ever has been, and there's so many teams that need to get on the fields, and this spring, it really came to a, came to a climax, as far as everybody trying to get on there, and it gets stressful, and it's difficult. Baseball and softball's getting pushed off their fields, because the youth soccer has fields out in there, out fields, and there's not enough field space for lacrosse, and one of the things that really moved us forward was when we added lacrosse, on the school side of things, that was seven, it was either seven or eight years ago, and the youth were right behind us, and then we added girls lacrosse, two or three years after that. Fields that used to be idle during the spring, because all we had was baseball, softball, and track, basically, they're now getting their hardest usage of the year in some cases. So instead of those fields being, say, a football field, or the field that he's showing you at the high school, those fields used to sit idle in the spring. Now, we get on them at 3 o'clock every day, and we're getting off them at, say, 5:30 or quarter to 6:00. The youth kids are literally waiting on the side of the field to get on that same field, and then fall rolls around, and it's soccer season, and the field's in poor shape from the spring lacrosse. Boys lacrosse in particular is probably the hard, one of the hardest sports on, on a field, as far as field damage, and, so it's hard to get the field to recover during July and August, because you can't really get grass to grow during that period of the year. So it's, it's good, there's just, there's just so many kids playing sports at the youth and school, and schools in Littleton, so that's kind of what's fueling this.
Good problems there.
And just so everyone knows, the reason why we are going for multiple fields, to do one field would be a nightmare. I mean, Mike can speak to that, but the amount of, the amount of fighting to just get on one field, it'd be impossible, and we'd be re-turfing that in eight years instead of 12. You know, it's, so we figure we do multiple fields, they get equal play, and we go.
Anything else from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with Littleton Turf Group. LTG.
LTG.
Moving on to the topic that we started last, with nothing else behind it besides minutes. In July 14th of 2014, the Board of Selectmen, I just, was put in place that we could expend $100,000 by town meeting approval to update our current master plan, which I think dates back 14 to 15 years, so it's well overdue. We're in the very first stages of this. Our last master plan, I think, had 10 different sections, and if you read through it, a lot of time and effort went into that plan. Things change over the years. I would, just by chance today, I went and looked at the open space and recreation plan, and some of the things they mentioned there, as far as fields go, has, has changed in those years. I think it's due time that we undertake this. The planning board has given us their vote on the setup of the committee before. Keith, you wanna take it from here?
Yeah, that, the discussion at our meeting a couple of weeks ago was on how to proceed with a master plan update process, and the board had suggested that before handing it off to a master plan steering committee, it would be well for the Board of Selectmen to make sure you had a, you and the community had a handle on what is updating a master plan all about, what are the opportunities, what's the smartest way to go about that. And I made the suggestion that we could, we could bring back one of our friends from MAPC to facilitate a discussion about that, so I'm happy to welcome back senior regional planner Cynthia Wall from MAPC. We were, actually, we were wearing seersucker last Monday night, but that's, appreciate, love to see. Last, I ran into Cynthia Brooks Brothers, I think, when I was buying my suit, and she was getting hers. And, and Maureen Toohill, also from the planning board.
That could be part of your master plan.
It's part of my master.
We're all gonna be in seersuckers, is that what you're saying?
It's the, it's the.
That's Brooks Brothers.
It's the master plan, so. So, happy to have Maureen Toohill from, as the planning administrator here tonight. And we have planning board member Don MacIver also. But Cynthia has prepared an outline, which, which was in your agenda packet, and she's prepared to walk us through a conversation about what, what it's all about with updating the, the master plan. We haven't done it since 2002. It's a great opportunity for a community to, to chart its future, and to reach a community consensus, and, and so we want to go about doing it the right way. And welcome Cynthia back. Getting to be a regular.
I'm very happy to be, to be back in Littleton. Where, would you like me to stand?
If you like. Yep.
MAPC has been pleased to work with Littleton on a variety of projects, and right now, we're actually, we're, we're gonna update your housing production. As we go through the outline, I prepared on the yellow sheet, a couple of things I really would like you to consider. So let's, let's just jump right to that. There's, we could talk all evening about how do you do the master plan. The short version is, you get a vision, you engage as many people as you can in the town, businessmen, residents, to create your vision, you look at the data, and you come up with steps. But the whole key, the real key, is how do you implement it? So as we go through the different parts tonight that are in the outline, please keep in mind the implementation, the third element here on the sheet. Ask, how will these policies, including the goals and objectives, be translated into town action? For example, will you actually do, are you willing to revise, just for example, subdivision, rules and regulations to accommodate the complete streets policy that you recently adopted? What about changing the zoning bylaw for multifamily housing? For successful implementation, you really need ownership of the document to get the things done. Will you have an implementation committee? Maybe you will, maybe you won't. Maybe you'll hand it off to a subcommittee, appointed, a subcommittee of the planning board, for example. The other question I want you to keep in mind is, what critical things, really the critical things, need to be done to change the path of the community permanently, or to maintain its direction? In other words, this will be a, a changed document, if it's going to be successful. And I've talked to several of my colleagues since I got this assignment, and every one of them that I, that I spoke with said, you know, every master plan we see can have up to 200 or 300 implementation steps, but in my opinion, what you need are the five, 10, or dozen really critical actions that you need to take. And finally, and I thought this was really good, this is something that another colleague suggested, she said, can you identify, will you, will you work to identify benchmarks and indicators to measure the effectiveness of the adopted plan, and design an evaluation process to assess plan implementation and success? So in other words, are you gonna monitor yourself, and kind, to try to prevent the, well, we did a plan, but it sits on the shelf, so what can we do? So these are the, kind of the three aspects that I'd like you to consider, as we just review the outline, about what a master plan is. Unless you've got any questions, or you'd like me to vary the presentation?
I would say just the board ask questions as we go on, but anybody have any questions right now? Just wanna listen.
Exactly, thank you. So what is a master plan? Well, it provides data and information on the current conditions of your town. It aligns the aspirations of the residents and business owners for the future. It's an analysis of future actions. In other words, we gather data on how, for example, housing trends. What, what do we see, particularly, MAPC does a lot of this work with communities, what do we see trending in the next five, 10, 20 years, in terms of housing and demographics? And then you develop policies and specific actions to achieve your desired future. When we do a, kind of a visioning, we, we ask people, well, what do you see happening? If you came back in 20 years, what would you like to see here? Yeah, what would you like to see? So what, what is the purpose of a master plan? Well, it's to guide your, to be, to guide your policy, decisions, but traditionally, it's, I don't think it's really been very well used. A lot of communities do them, the state requires that you do them, but the state doesn't check to see. Are they done consistently? Do they include all of the elements? It's, it's a bit odd that they don't, but they don't, and so some communities just don't do them at all. There is the, the MGL chapter 41, section 41, I'm sorry, 81D, that requires a master plan, and the elements that are required. Let's see if I can remember, I don't think I can remember all eight of them, but, oh, here it is, sorry. Goals and policy statement, a land use element, a housing element, and you can use your housing plan for that, an economic development element, natural and cultural resources, and you can use your open space plan for that, I'm sorry, natural and cultural elements, which are the cultural and historic resources. The next one is open space and recreation element, and that's where you can use the open space plan that you have, services and facilities, they call it circulation element, but it's your transportation issues, and then an implementation program element. So that's what is, the state requires, but you don't have to give equal weight to each of those. Some communities have an emphasis on land use, or maybe they have an emphasis on transportation. One thing that is odd, and that I do want to note, is that zoning ought to be based on a plan. A good zoning bylaw and changes to your zoning should be based on a plan, but there is no requirement to do that in Massachusetts. However, if you have a master plan, generally, that's good guidance for your zoning. The land use section can be very good guidance for your zoning, and, and can help avoid challenges. What a master plan is not, it is not the end goal, it's not, well, we've done the plan, and it, and it is nothing without a commitment to implement it. I have a couple of examples of master plans. Now, I know you're talking about an update. The update for Hingham, which Keith mentioned, we actually worked with them on it, and it was a bit odd, because it did not actually update their entire master plan. All it did was update the vision, I mean, kind of reconfirm the vision and the goals. And that was the scope, along with providing a lot of analysis for how their existing plan met metro future goals. It was a bit of a one-off, because it was funded by sustainable communities, so the thrust really was in meeting our metro future regional plan, which we would also include in any master plan that, that MAPC works on, but it's, it's a little bit, it's, it's relevant, but not totally relevant, if you follow, so. All right, this one. I have this one. I have one from the town of Hopkinton. I have just a few sections of the Dedham master plan, a section of the town of West Ford, which is interesting, the implementation, and very modern, very different kind of, of graphics, you know. In the old days, much more like Sudbury, black and white. And, and I'm not disparaging by any means, but you know, we've kind of come a long way. So the question really for you is, as you think about updating your master plan, what's going to be most effective to reach everybody in town? The people who participate, the businessmen, the boards, and the committees that will actually rely on the information in the master plan? What's going to be more and most useful? So I can pass these around if you're interested in looking at them?
Are these all available online too?
Yes, they are. They are.
Yeah, we'll get your electronic copy.
Yes.
Definitely want to see Westford's.
Yes, Westford. They, they did, that's very, that's a very interesting presentation, I think.
And did they go through, not just topically, like, what was it, Hopkinton, or your first six? Did they go through like the whole proper process?
As far as I know, they did. So the question is, how, the next item on the agenda, is how is a master plan done? What is the process? Well, you can do it by the town with volunteers, which is what Sudbury did. That was, they did not use a consultant at all for that plan. They did it in-house. They do have a very competent town planner. And that's what they've done. You can do it with a consultant. Hopkinton largely was done in-house, but they used a consultant to produce some maps. Some people just hire the consultant and work with the consultant. So it's, it's really up to the community, how much capacity they feel they have, how much money, frankly, they, they feel they have, and how active the citizenry is, and, and whether they really would, would want to participate and to what extent. You need some group to coordinate this, whether it's called a steering committee or a master plan committee. And generally, of course, it's a combination of elected officials and citizens. You may have some members of various boards on there. There's no magic formula. I think a very large committee can be unwieldy, but you don't want just a few people either. So you kind of strike a balance depending on your community and, you know, how you actually operate. Usually, we start with the visioning or community participation process. You want to get as many people as you can kind of involved and aware of it. Social media has been quite effective. I worked in a community, I'm working in a community, not doing a master plan, but working on downtown zoning. And they have been, as, you know, as you are, it's on the website. They have a blog about it. When they did the survey, of course, that was electronic and paper. They got 500 responses, which is pretty amazing. But there was a huge amount of outreach. You also reference, how do you do this? You also reference, of course, you start with your existing reports that you have. And I have provided the goals and objectives from the 1998 plan, or the 1998 report that was the basis for the goals and objectives that were then analyzed in your master plan report. So that's only seven pages. And they're, I think, I think they're pretty good, actually. So what do we, what would you do next? After you form the committee, you start with your visioning, your outreach. You may or may not want to do a survey. That would be up to you. There's a very nice survey in the back of the Sudbury, Appendix A, in that report. We could start with reviewing your existing goals and objectives to see. Well, have you, have you, what have we met? Are the goal, are the overall goals, are they still valid? Do they need to be adjusted? Are there some that we haven't included? For instance, climate change, climate change adaptation, that might be something that you want to look at as a community goal. Look at the objectives. How many of them have you met? If you've met them, that's great. If you haven't, you might want to consider carrying them over if you, if they're still valid. Depending on what we, we discover reviewing the goals and objectives, then we would ask for data to update them, you know. So example, your housing is really a great goal. Littleton will continue to be a community of homes that meet the needs of economically diverse households and people of, of different ages. Well, are you meeting that? Have you met it? Is that still a valid goal? What are you going to need for the future? We know from work we've done, well, we all know this, the population is aging, looking at different kinds of housing, people wanting to stay in their own community, but they don't want to shovel that snow. So can you accommodate that kind of desire in your community? What about workforce housing? So you just go through it, and then you would rely on your consultant or M A P C to provide updated data for the different aspects that you wanted information on. Finally, after we do all of these for the selected elements, and again, you know, you've got the housing, the open space kind of under control. You've done a lot of work on transportation. So it would be, you know, the land use element, and maybe some cultural fairs, that kind of thing, cultural and historic. Then you would develop, we would, the group would, with your consultant or whomever's working with you, specific goals and objectives to result in, in actions and implementation. So I guess the question is, you know, are there other purposes that you would like this master plan to serve? And just think about that as you develop your R F P or you prepare to work with your committee. And then kind of round out the discussion with those, with those questions that I started with at the beginning. Is it reasonable to think about the five, 10, or 12 really critical actions? Or are you more comfortable with a whole range of suggestions? What you want, I, I think, what you want should very much frame what you asked for in your, in your R F P or however you decide to, to work on it. So if you have any question, that, that's kind of the presentation. I really thought we could either discuss it or I could answer questions, or, you know, maybe Keith or Maureen has something to, to add to that.
I think we all might have questions, but if I can just start with, in the work you've done on different subjects, whether it's this or how you helped us in the past, how do you foresee getting as many different groups of people with interest all involved? I think that's one of the problems we've had, not problems, but sometimes you have the challenges, that you, you have a, something at the middle school, like we've done in the past, and, and you have people down there. But then when I go to, let's say, an athletic field, and they ask questions, well, why wasn't this included? How do you get all those people there? What, how, how do you draw them out? I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
There's a variety of ways. Survey is one way, sort of a relentless, I say relentless social media now, email blasts, if you do it, it's on your website. In this other community, they actually had a, like a, well, it was an economic development corporation. So they had a consultant, a media consultant, articles in the newspaper. I mean, I think that you've done a fabulous job, frankly, the projects that I worked on. You know, the zoning, you'd have to like not be aware. I mean, not turn on your, your, you know, your computer or not, if, not to know if anything's happening.
Yeah. And they even showed up at town. What I loved about it, though, just to use the example of Littleton Common Zoning, I remember that for as much as we saturated, as much as we had many people involved in that process, we still had questions on town meeting floor from folks who had not been part of the process. And I think the highest tribute to the work that M A P C did in, in getting us through that is we actually had other citizens stand up and say, wait a minute. They knew what the answer to the question was, and they say, we've already discussed this. We've already agreed that we're going to do this. So that's, so we had citizens answering other citizens on the floor of town meeting. But that takes an awful lot of work to get, to get that level of buy-in. A lot of different players here. One of the issues that came up at the Housing Production Plan Forum that we had a couple of months ago was, how do you integrate? Well, yeah, we're doing housing, but then housing doesn't stand by itself. Housing is integrated with other things. It's also actually part of transportation, or it's about a economic development. There are so many other things that it plays into, or where, or make, or where you make decisions about particular land uses. It, there are competing interests. There's, do you, do you develop housing here, for example? Or do you put in a recreational field? Or do you preserve it? Or you, do you have it for business or industry? That, those are, those are all of the things that can come together at a, in a master planning context. Instead of doing one project on its own, that we at least have the opportunity to pull all of those together. One of the, I had shared with the board for, for tonight's meeting a copy of the M A P C work plan for, for the year, which has got a lot of stuff. And Melissa mentioned that some of the things that the communication that, that is being done by M A P C staff to promote communications and to foster, you know, through, I'm not sure which agency it was heading, whether it's the data group or, or Poli's group or whomever. But I know there are some cutting edge things that M A P C is doing. I've seen it in Quincy and seen it in some other, you know, inner city areas and, and other suburbs, where engaging the community, just taking on a whole different level through technology and through other things.
Although I've got, I, I agree, we are. But again, the metrics of it all. I mean, we had a very involved, very involved game. They, they did some kind of game, partnered with the university, and to simulate, they had avatars and did this, did this, this is a real game. And then, so we, we worked with them for months, and we had a grant to do this. It was very expensive. Then it was in an international competition. So it had to be voted on. And so we went back and asked people, would you vote, would you vote, would you vote? There was a very small percentage of people who voted, who had even participated in that community. And that, to me, was kind of heartbreaking because just as you say, you want to build the constituency. You want people to come back, or at least when you go and call on them, could you just vote like, and it was an electronic, you know, vote. So I mean, I think it's a real, it's a, it is a challenge. But, you know, you can do things like, of course, send information home with the schoolchildren. You can, of course, go to your civic groups, your Rotary, your Chamber of Commerce, what, you know, whatever you have, your sports leagues. I mean, you kind of saturate. You think about everybody, excuse me, I've even, I have heard of communities asking the ministers, rabbis, and priests to mention it at the houses of worship. Oh, you know, we're going to start this master plan process, or we're going to start this planning process. Would you please, you know, participate, attend, get on the website, see when the meetings are? You know, so that's, that's another way. You can do, as Keith said, you know, we can, there are these sort of electronic, well, it wasn't, it was a game. It was to foster engagement. And that was aimed specifically at youth and non, you know, non, people who were not English speaking, actually, as a primary language. And it worked to a point. So, but we are open to any.
And then we have plenty of folks, the seniors in the community, where we have direct outreach, and it's in person, or it's, or it's in, or it's in, on a hard copy that's mailed out to them in order to engage those folks who don't use computers.
Absolutely. We still have to, to do both, because everybody does not have.
I would offer that if this board offers a persuasively compelling argument as to why a master plan is required, folks will come forward. There are certainly going to be disappointments in life, as you just described, Stodham, was it you said? Whichever town, very few folks came out to vote. There's certainly going to be that. But I would say, you know, we start with, why do we have a master plan? And state law is not the reason. As we as a board think, it's a good idea for what reason, or reasons? What's our overarching vision of this that we'd like a master plan to achieve for us, for our town? Worrying about at this point whether or not we're going to get 1,000 people, 5,000 people out to vote on the master plan is important in the background, but I wouldn't say it's our leading discussion item. Leading discussion item is, why do we want a master plan? And if we can't answer that, stick with the one we have. And save money and save time. So step one is, why do we, the five of us, think the town needs a master plan? Or revision to the current master plan? I think that's where our discussion begins.
As I recall, I went through the first master plan, and I recall it was a pretty slow start, that trying to get people to buy into it, and, you know, and that very question, you know, what's this mean? Why do we want to do this? And overcoming all that. And, and I got to say, is, you know, there were people from various committees that came to me and said, you need to come to this. And it was that kind of, and I did. And then, then I'm in the middle of it. And I think what we did back then was great work. And there's not a lot of people left that, there's probably nobody in any of the offices that were in office then that worked on that plan. You were probably around. There's a few of us that were around for that. And, well, there's a lot more than that in one fashion or another, but not so many in the same position they were. But, but it's hard, I recall it being hard to get it moving. And when it got moving, it began to take a life, and people began to want to own it. And, and the discussions got a lot more frank and, and straight forward. And the barriers of different organizations, different committees, and different boards began to break down because everybody got the idea, it's, either you get on the train, or the train's going to leave the station, and everybody's going to be behind. So to me, what's important is, is, is we've got to deliver that message first. People have to see a need, that they should be involved in this process. They have to understand that, that they belong as part of the future of the community. And I know of no better way to do that than to have this not be a plan of, of the Planning Board, of the Selectmen, or this committee, or that committee, or the consultant, or whatever. But have this truly be, you know, one of our guiding principles is, is that this is a community plan. We are nothing more than facilitators. And we are going to collect and hopefully enact a representation of this community in large numbers of people. And so that's young and old, and richer or poorer, and all the rest of those things, we have to get their involvement. But it's a slow start, as I recall it. It's, it's hard getting them there. It walloped for about a year, didn't it, when I first started? It just sat there and sat there, and then all of a sudden it started picking up energy.
I thought last time there was an interesting first start. We had divided it up, and the goals and objectives got funding first. And the consultant at that time brought us through that process, and we were able to close that piece of it. But then to jump to the master plan itself, that wasn't a good, a slow start, stopping the first part and then starting over again.
So, so while we may be able to sit there, and as, as board members and committee members and town officials say, why, we think there should be a master plan, the community, the population has to think there needs to be a master plan, and what it's going to do. I think the one we've had has served us pretty well.
Perhaps it's semantics. While facilitation is a task we may perform, leadership is an essential element of what we must do. Otherwise, why do you have Board Selectmen if you don't need leadership in the town and helping bring things forward? So to say, well, we'll just sit back and let's see if there's a groundswell of, of interest, thanks for the word, of interest.
No, we facilitate that groundswell. That's what leadership is. We don't tell them where they're going. We make them want to come with us to the place.
Perhaps we're on semantics, Alex, and I'm not going to debate the semantical terms that you choose to use this evening. All I know is, this board must show leadership. And if it's leadership by people wanting to follow, great, if that's the way you want to view it, because it is wanting to follow. to view it, because it is wanting to follow. But there has to be that leadership that goes out there. So certainly, we have to articulate that as a board. We have to look at the mechanics of it, and if it's bringing a steering committee to bear, which I think is part of it. And that steering committee helps us facilitate, if you will, the groundswell of input from folks as to what they see as the vision of their town, of our entire town. But ultimately, I think the board of selectmen have to clearly articulate what that is for the people who helped bring it to fruition for the entire town. And to say that it may just happen by accident, I don't see that. Certainly, in our careers, each of us here have seen the need for leadership and to help bring it apart, and not just wait to see if it does happen. So I think something that we'll have to articulate it, as I say, and build public support for that. It's public support that the public is working towards, but we all know you do not yet anywhere near, but 5% of the folks will show up and participate in something like this. And there's the other 95% that we need to speak to also, and bring them along also. You mentioned an excellent point with the town meeting, where some folks who had not participated previously asked questions, and other folks who had. And that's important, and I think that gets to your point. Those people become very useful in helping bring this forward. And then we're going to have to decide on a development methodology, on how we actually want to construct this. And there has to be certainly some construct to it. And again, just waiting around to see how it happens. Your point earlier about a slow start, and I think it'll be a slow start here, too, no matter how well we think we can plan and help facilitate it, as you say. But hopefully, we can jumpstart it a little bit more. And with your experience, and the experience of some of the other folks that you do know participated, you know, 14 years or so ago, I think we can get a better start this time around.
I had the great pleasure of meeting some people that I've been in this town for a while, and meeting people that I've never talked to before. And it was just... It was a great experience for me, although it was a time I didn't really have, but it turned out to be well worth it.
Yeah, I'm certain to it. We found that, you will be surprised, people come forward, they know what they want. And I think one of the points that seems to be a way to achieve real success is to have it adopted by town meeting. At least the vision statement, or maybe the goals and objectives, maybe you don't go through everything. But typically, the planning board adopts it. But in conversations with my colleagues, it's if you have town meeting, actually formally say, yeah, this is our guiding document. And we expect, I think what follows from that is you expect some budget decisions to be made based on some of the goals, certainly the housing goal. Just as Keith said, you know, it is a competing... You know, you know certainly better than I do. You're confronted with it all the time, you know, people, all kinds of competing demands.
And I would offer, a master plan should mean exactly that. And while we've talked about some of the other plans that are ongoing, and the work is great on what we have going with, whether it's transportation plan, the housing inventory plan, economic development, which the ball's just starting to roll there, those all... And I'm going to use this word annexes, and I'll explain what I mean by that. The master plan is precisely that. It's the overarching plan that everything is going to support so that it's achieved. And each one of those annexes, and again, using that term to describe, the transportation plan, the housing plan, the economic development plan, they all need to be designed so that they support the master plan. It can't be that you build all these little pieces down here and then try and put a master plan over it. A master plan has to be established first, understanding that we have ongoing plans in many of the other areas right now. But they have to realize that each of those plans is subordinate to the master plan, and it supports the master plan.
It's the master plan that's the document that... It's the vision that integrates all of those other elements. And frankly, you need to, if you... And I guess maybe to Cynthia, that if the first thing you do, that a community does, is the engaging of the citizens in having the vision processed, then that can help provide that overarching umbrella that can then be in place so that you plug, not to mix metaphors here, but to, you know, the context into which the housing element occurs, or open space, or economic development, or whatever.
Because each one is not developed in a silo. And we do see instances where that happens, where each one of those is developed in a silo, and now we try to integrate it. Systems integration is an extraordinarily difficult task. Melissa can speak very clearly to that one. But when you're integrating systems that are being designed to work with each other from the get-go, that integration becomes much easier. And that's, in essence, that's getting into the nuts and bolts of this as we go forward, what I think is important in the approach we need to take.
I think, PJ, you know, your leadership piece is twofold, because not only the board of selectmen as CEOs of the town, but, you know, the planning board as the planners for the town have to coexist and come up with a unified vision to sell the town. So, you know, we can sit here as a five-member board to say, here is our vision, but we need the planning board on...
No, it's not to dismiss anybody else.
No, no, I'm not saying that you are. I think that the leadership piece is absolute, and we just need to incorporate the planning board into that, too. And I think that, you know, the two boards come up with a vision to say what this master plan is about.
I think that's where our biggest leadership role is, is to take the various boards and committees that would be involved in this process, and the planning board is certainly pivotal in this process, and get us to work together on the common vision. And that's where our leadership will be tested, and that's where we need to want to be tested.
And we almost, statutorily, the planning board owns the process, so to speak. Cynthia brings up the great point about town meeting, and definitely endorse that, because if you get town meeting buy-in, at least there's 2% of the electorate is now backing it. And it may sound like, well, 2% is a small number, but actually, it's substantial, because those are people who participate. And those are folks that you do want participating. And hopefully, they do reach out to friends and neighbors and family, and pull more into the process as it moves along. And if they see it working well, they will want to participate.
And those other existing boards that you spoke of earlier that, you know, are in the silo, working on those different pieces of the master plan, you know, the communication from this board and the planning board down to them, to communicate out to the participants in those groups, will foster growth in the whole process also.
And I'm going to use a sensitive term here. Rather than communicate down, communicate across to them. It's a perspective, and that's always... And I understood what you meant, but I want to show you, I could be sensitive, too, here.
I see it all the time.
Yes.
Yeah, it's like a huge, big circle, and the more people you draw in, the more people you draw in, so... Yes, but you're absolutely right, you know, conservation commission.
That's true. Because the way that we've done planning projects recently, and even the ones that have been very successful, they have been standalone projects. It's been Littleton Common. It's been looking at a particular area. It's been, you know, we had Lush want to look at the crossroads of, you know, Route 2 and 495. We looked at other particular areas of town. We're looking at housing as a standalone. But what's needed, and it seems to me that the voters get it, because we asked the voters to give us the initial $100,000 towards what could be a $250,000 total project cost, and they said yes. So there seems to be a general recognition that the need to have a master plan framework in place is what we need to do. I mean, there was little... I don't recall any debate. There was little debate about the need to have that master plan context to be able to move forward, so.
I was just looking for that in the town meeting report. And the majority of that cost was for a consultant to help us, isn't that? I was trying to remember what made up that 100K. I think it was, we were getting a consultant, right?
Yeah, almost all of it would be. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we actually, we set aside, we figured, we came up with a number of about 7,500 that we need to have our own staff help keep the project going with, you know, some rudimentary staff support and minutes and that kind of stuff. But the bulk of the work of doing a master plan would be to hire an outside consultant. There are some, I'd have to say, larger, much larger, maybe a little larger organizations who might be able to do it within-house staff, but that's not... We're not able to do that.
Yeah, I think that's smart.
Even now, I mean, when we have a big planning project that we, you know, we... On a number of them, we've contracted out and brought, you know, Cynthia back, or Mark Raskott, or others from M A P C to help us with those on a case-by-case basis. But this would be a big project that we would have to look at the procurement.
You mentioned, a while ago, when you first started speaking, the board of selectmen should take a look and say, you know, do we even need it? What's the role here? I think the board of selectmen, planning board, including the other boards also, is that if you don't go back and take a review, even if it's just a review, then it does tend to sit on a shelf, and then it gets outdated very quickly. And I think we've gone through that 12 years, so as far as I'm concerned, leadership or whatever, I think it's probably the time that, as a board, we finally say, we need this review. I know, no one goes back and reads all of it all the time. But when you go back and take a look at it, myself, I'll find parts of it here and there that certainly don't apply right now. If we don't take that review, and I think the first part is a review, well, maybe it's part of the few, but I think there is a goal there that we do have, that this... We don't want the master plan, which is required by state, I understand, to be something that sits in the shelf that doesn't get updated, because things do change with time.
You know who looks at master plans? And I found this very interesting. Perspective businesses who are looking whether to locate in your community. And so, and I've had that discussion with folks, not only about Littleton, but about just in general, someone's looking... We've had a... There was a firm that is a consulting firm that helps businesses select where they should go from all over the country. And they were sharing with the 495 Metro West Partnership and another workshop that I went to, just the insight that you start with a community's master plan. Why? Because it exists, because it's an articulation of what the community's vision is. And for that way, it becomes a communication tool of the town to the rest of the world. Certainly, the Littleton Common zoning was us communicating with the rest of the world, and Sam Park read it, and he said, I want to do that, and that's why he's here. So the master plan document performs that, you know, over and over again. It provides the framework where, you know, because time is money to a business. Do you want to come here? I don't know. Well, if you... Let me see if I'd be welcome. And you just have to read what your, you know, what the vision is in your master plan, what implementation steps there are, and it can become a great tool. But in order... And therefore, it needs to be up to date. Therefore, whatever was said, however well-intentioned in 2002, is not... Should not be what dictates how, you know, what happens in 2014. We need to update it simply to the... An up-to-date communication tool.
Yeah. It's a very declarative statement. 2002 plan needs to be updated for various reasons, to include demographic projections didn't bear out as put in there. The build-out space here in town is different here in 2014 than it was in 2002. The school structure is different. You can go down and list some very declarative statements as to reasons why, and I think that's what needs to be documented and articulated well, because now, it's a reason to tires, that why are we doing this? We're all in agreement. We're all shaking our heads like bobble dolls, yeah, it's a good idea. But we need to put it down and clearly, as I say, and I apologize for saying the word again, but articulate, why as a board, we think it's a good idea. And those are just three or four reasons that pop right off the top of my head after reviewing the plan and seeing the reality of Littleton today.
I don't think I've ever called a bobblehead doll before.
Apologize, sir.
Further comments?
I liked Westford's a lot. Did they use a particular consultant, or did they do that on their own?
I believe the majority of that was done by their planner, Angus Jennings. Yes, I can ask him, but I believe that they did a lot. They had a... They had some kind of event, I think it was their visioning, and it was in the summer in June.
Yeah, they have an annual event that they have, I think at Kimball, so...
Yeah, and so they had a...
Free food is an important part of planning.
Yes, well, they did break for ice cream. I saw that on the agenda, so, you know...
I'd say it's free, it's not free, you know, Kimball does charge, but the town covers the cost.
Yeah. And so they had people there under a tent. They had pictures. It's on the web, so they have pictures. Everybody's under the tent, and they're busy. So then they did something really interesting. They asked for a lot of feedback. How successful was this? What would you change? Was this a good process? And people said they couldn't hear, which I thought was really interesting, because there were only... There was only one tent, I guess, or one enclosure, or one room, so they... When they broke up into groups, and that's just... It's small, but you need to be mindful of these little details, because if someone does come out, they certainly want to hear the person sitting next to them or across the table. So it's just the little things like that, you know, that you pick up from looking. But, yeah, it's a very modern, it's a very contemporary sort of outcome. And that's been in my mind, too. How do we keep up with the times? The, you know, a black-and-white 200-page report, is anybody really going to delve into that, except commission members, board members, and so forth? How do we maximize the outcome for the public? And one idea is simply to do a map. So you do a map, and you say, okay, the red things are the red dots on the map, and here's a little text box that goes with it. Those are the four key land use things that we're going to do. Maybe we pick up the work that was done from 495 Partnership, and your priority development areas, and your priority preservation areas. And then the green ones are your priority preservation areas, and your purple ones are your transportation, something like that. And you just have a map. And of course, you've got all the data, and you do have a report behind it. But the map, or something like that, becomes really the outreach piece. And the piece, people go, oh, all right, I'm sitting, you know, I'm on the conservation commission. Oh, yes, this is the important thing that everybody agreed that we would work on as a priority. It's just a thought.
Yeah, making data visual is, I think, a really smart thing. Like, I can take a look at this plan, and to your point, know where they're on track, where they're not off-track, what's going on, even just quickly with just a scan of my eyeballs, right? I don't know how long it will take me to figure that out on this one, right? I mean, I'm sure it's a lot of good information, and it's all necessary, but to your point, there can be layers, right? So here's your, you know, high-level map, you know, the way you put it, and go, okay, I want to drill down to this, and then that's what's behind it, right? Anyway, I really like that. I'm good.
Yeah. Yeah. Sort of the Keith's point about, you know, are we keeping up with the times at M A P C? Well, we are. We try.
Cynthia, do you find that all towns have an implementation plan? Do they review it years later on? Do they do... Do they go back six years later and say, how many things did we actually follow? Or have we taken a different path?
It depends. It depends, frankly, on the capacity of the town. Hopkinton has a planner, and Sudbury has a planner. And out of all of those objectives, they've done, respectively, out of 100, I guess, they've done like 98, each of them, by just, yeah, by just chipping away, chipping away, you know? But that's the point person. Other towns have an implementation committee. And if it's comprised of people in sort of policy positions, like a person from the planning board, a person from maybe the board of selectmen, the town manager, some of the key department heads, you know, your building commissioner, maybe, or your health officer, yeah. And you review it. You could have periodic, you know, reviews, certainly an annual review. Where are you on this? Housing, what's happened? Planning board, as you've had these applications come in, you know, what are we doing? How many single-family houses? Did we permit, you know, do we permit any elderly developments? That kind of thing. And you could actually have a... I would recommend an annual review of these things.
Even when building the plan, you can have segues, so that, you know, if A, if B, and you've already at least got a point of departure, you know, when you're building the plan, so that when you do those reviews, you've already thought some of this through previously, and now these set of circumstances present themselves instead of the ones originally thought. But you already have some ideas, because people have thought it through. So if it doesn't become something that's right up against your face, and now you have to react to it.
So just, you know, it really just depends. Some towns never look at it. They just do it, and they just put it aside.
I think we should look at it.
Any problems opening up the questions?
No.
Anyone have any comments they'd like to make in the public?
This is more comment.
Can you identify yourself?
Sure, I'm sorry. Michael's on Levelland Street. Okay, the best place to start is, I guess, nothing sharp is divine like disappearance. And there are a number of towns in Massachusetts, I hate to start on negative note, there's a number of towns in Massachusetts that are failing. And I'm sure there are a lot of people in the room who know exactly who they are and why. And stimulated by this and because of the work I happen to do, I managed to build a little, a small model of Littleton. It's an economic model and it's based no more on the assumption after I went through, maybe I have to be careful, 20 minutes of trying to figure out how to make this workable for one person. I treated Littleton as an island. And if you think about it for a while, it'll interest you why Littleton is in fact an island. Just look at the cars leaving and coming, you'll get it. To make a long story short, for the models I've done, and I don't know if Massachusetts does this by itself, for the models that I've constructed, it looks as if Littleton is drifting in the direction of no return, where it won't be able to afford to exist because of its demographics, because of its location, and because of what's happening around it. So what I'm suggesting, and I'm pretty sure this model is oversimplified and probably too dismal to contemplate, but as a resident of Littleton, I would do, suggest strongly we do what we can to avoid this condition. And one of the ideas, very simply, is maybe focus on maybe five or six things at the most that will actually affect the viability of this town. And I don't care what model you use, whether you use, I'm going to conserve land, I'm going to build cluster, it doesn't matter. In these models, by the way, the outcome is the same. It doesn't work. It has to do with who we are and what has happened around us in the rest of the world and how we've been affected by it. So there's a reason why the towns, some of the towns further west from here are not doing well. They are victims of the very same forces that are coming in our direction and have already arrived. How long those trends will continue, I don't know. But if I could put a sense of urgency in front of us, it would be to focus on, as Mr. Vella suggested, on a few things that really cut through and make this town viable, more viable than it's drifting in the direction. May I for your attention?
Anyone else?
Sure. Don McIver. Yeah, there are several thoughts I have. It's a good hearing, a discussion, because ideas that spread out amongst various groups. There's a famous quote of Dwight Eisenhower saying that, you know, he's never seen a plan that's worth what's written on, but the planning process itself is invaluable. And I think Alex referred to something that we talked about, talking to other folks and seeing what people wanted. So planning can be very useful and it can be used and monitored. And as the example was pointed out, Hopkinton, I think what Cynthia said, they have 98% hit rate of meeting the goals. Also, zoning is likely to change. Right now, in the legislature, there's an update on zoning that might happen, it might happen at the end of legislative session, which is Friday. And one of the problems with the zoning in Massachusetts, often credited as the 49th worst in the state, in the country, because it's so fragmented, is actually tying together the zoning and various planning components with the master plan. So master plans are likely to be more important as we go along. And finally, the third thought I had is when, as a planning board, we're trying to convince, I guess, the finance committee to back the funding of $100,000 for doing, for the first component of the master plan. Maren and I put together various information and I think I mentioned, well, the last master plan, you know, we had two traffic lights and she corrected me, said, no, it was only one. So things have changed quite a bit and things do need to be updated. So, you know, it's been a long time since we've looked at the master plan. I think going ahead of the master plan is important. I agree implementation is important. I think if we have a vendor, that's important, too. If you remember correctly, last time around, it got bought down, as did Groton's, because we have the same vendor, and I don't know what the problem was. There was actually a planner and another firm has evolved and Groton moved ahead because they threw more money at it and got additional outside resources. So I think a lot of things that Cynthia has said makes a lot of sense about implementation, moving ahead and also involving folks. And it isn't top-down, it's a little bit up top, but bottom-up and mixed, as the people that show up and the people that own it and then promote it. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, it's so nice to see Mr. McIver. When we worked on the Littleton Common project, participants included both members of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, even though it was, I believe, principally Planning Board project. So it was really great because we got a lot of valuable sort of cross-conversation, as well as a really great loyal following of citizens. That Keith kind of mentioned, there were about a dozen people at all the meetings. And this is the kind of thing that I, that was very, I don't know, unique to Littleton, but it certainly was a very positive experience. And it's the kind of thing I think will happen again. I think when people find out, we will get a loyal, kind of a loyal nucleus of people who will participate. And the joint board, I thought, was very successful, practically a joint board.
And Lauren, hold for a minute.
Would anything else? Next up?
Well, you know, you've got your public hearing on goals, which will be at your next regular meeting two weeks from tonight. Your top goal is updating the master plan of the nine that you came up with. Maybe it would be worth, and we can do some work between now and then to help, we're preparing some detail to go along with those proposed goals, maybe to try to articulate, because I think it's a great idea, what are, what's the purpose of updating master plan? What do you hope to accomplish? To take some of the threads of what have come through this conversation, any further input that you have, and just make sure that we can try to articulate for that, for that public hearing, what are the, you know, what do you hope to accomplish? Why should people engage in the process and what's the, you know, what's the benefit of doing that?
Will you help us do that, draft something?
Yeah, I'll draft something. We'll work with, I'll work with Cynthia as well to try to, you know, take some of the things we talked about tonight and draft it.
It is summer and we understand, you know, people's vacations and the like, although even come August 11, folks are starting to return. But it's a public hearing, as Keith said, so we're certainly hoping for input. And this becomes one of those first opportunities to try and broadcast as much as possible. Certainly it's for the goals in general, but that top goal is the master plan and ensuring that there's enough publicity out there so that folks want to show up from the get-go. And maybe it kickstarts a little bit of that process. You stated earlier, it began slowly last time around.
Well, part of that kickstart, as I recall last time, was, I think that's when I was fire chief. I think it was a phone call from one of the Board of Selectmen saying how important it was I should be at the meeting.
So it helped you energize you?
That was a kickstart. And, you know, after that, boy, I was all on board because I liked it so much. So maybe as far as all our staff and all the committees and stuff, you know, that kind of communication to them that we're going to have this discussion, inviting their...
And I would offer it's us reaching out to folks also. So just as you received a personal phone call, maybe if some friends, family, neighbors receive personal phone calls from us, it's helpful.
All right.
If Don mentioned General Eisenhower and Jerome with a military axiom, no plan survives first contact with the enemy. And it's not that the folks out there are the enemy, it's the environment that will be operating in adjusts itself rather quickly and we have to be nimble.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you, Cynthia. Yeah, thanks very much.
Nice to see you.
Thanks for coming, Maren.
Now, I'm going to hoard all these. Now, I'll get them online, no worries.
Keith, do you want me to, do you want any of these hard copies? I need to take some.
Do you? Okay, I'll get some electronic copies from you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like the-
The Westford one.
Yeah, the Westford one.
Yeah, Strategic Planning Retreat. Thank you, Cynthia.
Okay, moving on. Other business, consent agenda and minutes approval.
Okay, all right. Do you have the same thing? Okay. Ready to make a motion?
I think Mr. Vella found something in the minutes, didn't you?
Oh, line number 17, is it?
Sixteen or seventeen.
Line 16.
Oh, my God, no way.
It was a comma out of place.
No, it was just state versus start.
Oh, serious. Was it 16, really?
Fourth word in, I believe.
Right. That was on the minutes of the 14th or the 21st.
Are you found a grammatical error?
The 21st, 21st.
Instead of start, it's state, is that what you're checking on?
It should be start.
I cannot believe I randomly guessed that line like that. That's insane.
I missed that one.
Yes, I did not see that.
We actually have three sets of mine.
It was Keith's test, see if I was reading it.
You passed, good one.
It was an open book test, right?
Okay, anything else?
So just motion to approve?
Yeah. Well, let's start with the July 14th minutes.
Okay. Motion to approve meeting minutes from Board of Selectmen, July 14th.
Okay, moving second for the minutes of the 14th, all those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from July 21st.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 21st with the grammatical correction.
Is it a second?
Second.
Let's move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we have executive sessions from March 24th.
This was a matter that was the subject of litigation, but the matter has since been concluded. And so that's why it was not, we brought you originally several sets of minutes. And this, including some matters that were concluded, this one, we subsequently received information from our attorney that the matter had been concluded and so the minutes are ready for the board to-
Release?
Approve, release, yeah, approve and release.
I can just ask a procedural question. Your past practice, as far as folks who were not present for that particular meeting, what's been the past practice?
That's a discussion we agreed to have at a future date. As a sense, although the one thing is that sometimes executive session meetings might date six months to a year or longer and they have to be released and one member might be the only person left on the board, so. Yeah, the legal answer is, and Town Council has provided this response as well, that there's nothing that says that minutes can only be approved or acted on by those members who were attending. That, and as the chair indicates, in some cases, when a board releases executive session minutes, maybe years after the matter was discussed and concluded, it's the board that's sitting here now that has the responsibility to act on the minutes.
I'm researching, there are three members here that were there, so I don't think it's an issue of you guys' vote.
I think in general, it's a good point. I mean, if you're going to approve minutes of what happened in the meeting, you need to be in the meeting. And whether, you know, the law says, okay, we've got to do it, that's a matter of necessity because boards do change and you may not have the people there that do it, but when you have the opportunity to have members there that were there, that should be relied upon. And if you're not there, I personally, I did not vote on one of these set of minutes because I wasn't there. And I don't think it's, you know, how am I to vote on something that happened that I did not participate in? And- Yeah, on these minutes that we, that at our meeting two weeks ago, I brought to board the information that council had ruled that the matter was now, could now be, had been concluded and you could vote on them. But the board discussed at the time, since all three of the members who were present at the meeting back on March 24th, or three, the three members who are on the board now who were also on the board then, since all three were not here two weeks ago, we didn't vote on them. Two weeks ago, we waited until tonight. So it's now tonight.
All right. I make a motion to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes, March 24th, executive session.
Second? Moving second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's a wrap. Good night. No, it'll be a wrap when you press the button.